And we will start, I need a motion to amend the agenda.
So I moved.
Have a first by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor?
Is this working?
One, two, three.
All in favor? Okay, six, zero.
To the consent agenda, we're removing item 5VV, resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement with, for Pops Ferry Bridge.
I move the agenda as amended, second.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Demming? Six, zero. Alright, we'll now move to the presentation agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I will, uh, during my report, I want to, we have, I think, twenty-eight longevity awards, and I'd like, some of them are here. Got the names out here, three up there. We have a pen here, but, uh, the gold watch will be on the way. Felicia, Sargus, yes she's, oh, there she is. How are you? Congratulations.
Thank you.
She got a gold watch.
Yeah, well, okay, we got, we'll do all three at one time. Nick Dubasong, very good. Congratulations, Fire Department.
You want to get the governor's phone?
Fifteen years.
Jason Earl Davis.
Jason Earl Davis, what? Forty-five years? No, it's twenty-five years, excuse me. Jason Earl. Well done, congratulations. Couple of little introductions. First, I'd like to ask Chris Foray from, uh, CTA to come up and, you got Leadership Gulf Coast? You want to tell a little bit about, uh, some of the folks that are here?
Twenty years.
Thank you, Chris. Alright. Just, uh, I'm Chris Foray with Coast Transit Authority, just want to let you know, we're, I'm actually a part of the twenty-three, twenty-four Leadership Gulf Coast, and I have seven of that team here today. We have, uh, Mary Beth Burdick from Southern Christian Services, Lori Trahan from Regions Bank, Sissy Andrews, Deaville St. Martin City Council, I mean, Chamber, excuse me, Brock Day, I believe he's still on his way, he is, uh, with SBD Construction, Paul Donnell from Memorial Health Systems, and Robert Walto from Clime CDC. Actually, we're here just experiencing a little bit of, uh, actually attending a few city council meetings, Harrison County Supervisor's meetings, just to see how the wheel of government rolls.
Thank you, Chris, and thank y'all for being here. Uh, I'm gonna turn the microphone on to, uh, Jerry, to make one introduction of, uh, a new folk, new member of our staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to introduce Mandy Hornsby to the council. Mandy is our new historic administrator for the city, and she came to us from the library system. She brings a wealth of knowledge, and she really hit the ground running. We're already researching things about the old brick house and a whole bunch of other things, so I wanted y'all to be able to put a, a face with a name, and, uh, she's operating out of our office, uh, the Community Development Building, so if you have any questions for... Do you want to say anything?
Um, as y'all, y'all have seen me around, so I'm not too shy. Uh, I'm just looking forward to this opportunity to, you know, continue to preserve our history and culture, because it is a unique one. I've studied history all over the world, but nothing is as exciting as researching history from your own hometown.
Yeah, that's, we're real proud of what you've done, I'm telling you, so far, so thank you so much, Mandy. Jerry, thank you.
Hey, Jerry. Jerry. You can tell, I cut the ribbon on the old brick house when it first built in the eighteen hundreds, so I can tell all about it.
She, she got those, uh, clippings.
Can you go back and research that, please? There might be a picture of Mr. Lawrence doing that. Thank you.
Alright, Jerry, thank you, and I did, we want to welcome everyone here, and everyone out in the world wide web to, uh, join us today, and it's our Thanksgiving meeting, and I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving over the next few days, and I know, uh, our employees, uh, we're thankful that they do the job that they do, and they'll have a few days off, maybe a few hours off tomorrow, I can't swear to that, but, uh, anyway, that does conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move to the council reports, start with Mr. Lawrence, you've got thirty seconds.
I never pay attention to that, Nathan. We come into these meetings, we elected to speak, not for thirty seconds. We elected for four years, so it could take four years to get rid of these speeches.
You got fifteen seconds.
First thing we did, we cut the, the ribbon on the West Biloxi Library, did a great job, and I told the mayor, the next thing on the West Biloxi Library, next thing we got to paint outside, to clean up the outside, and finish the ceiling. We're gonna keep the building open, it looked good inside, the carpet was great.
Outside, too.
Building looked great. And I just said, you gotta make sure we clean off the outside.
Let me interrupt you, your last ten seconds here, but I did one, one, uh, ribbon cutting that's gonna, our dedication this afternoon, at three o'clock, is, uh, the DMR has restored what was called Big Island. Everybody knows we're Big Island, right north of, of Lee Street.
Galat Island.
It's gonna be Galat Island officially this afternoon, so if you have an opportunity, get to, uh, uh, the boat ramp at, at Lee Street, and there'll be a dedication of, of Galat, officially Galat Island. I'm sorry for taking it.
Mayor, it depends on how long Mr. Lawrence is gonna take.
That's exactly right.
We probably won't make it to three o'clock. Second thing, we had, uh, the Thanksgiving dinner for the special needs, the nice crowd, did a great job, and the people that's involved in that, served a lot of people, they, they really enjoy that event. It's a great day for them, a lot of turkey, I think they cooked like thirty, twenty-pound turkey, they had a lot of, a lot of food, so everything turned out good that day. And next thing, the rest of my time, I was gonna thank everybody, happy, happy Thanksgiving, and eat well. This is a great time, you get all the different dressings you can eat. That's, that's how you gain all the weight. I'd like to call up Teresa Thompson, is she in the room? She'd like to make a statement, go ahead, Teresa.
I'm Teresa Thompson, fifteen oh six Avalon. I'm opposed to the rezoning of Father Ryan because it's another attempt to destroy our well-established, family-oriented neighborhoods. The property has a Father Ryan address and is part of Father Ryan RS-75 neighborhood, which does not allow for commercial activities like short-term rental. The only reason given for rezoning this property, five zones up from RS-75 to the highest zone, RM-30, is that they want to apply for short-term rental on this property. This allows for commercial activities in this residential neighborhood, and sets the precedent that it can be allowed in other residential neighborhoods. In May twenty-twenty-two, Mr. Creel at a planning commission, abbreviate that as PC, meeting, told us how the PC would not allow a two-step request for a rezone of an RS-75 property in a conditional use. The PC considered it too excessive for the effect on the RS-75 neighborhood. The citizens in the meeting felt that this was our only failsafe we had from being overrun with short-term or other commercial activities in our neighborhood. In September, I questioned why we were allowing a rezone of an RS-75 property in a conditional use for a commercial B&amp;B to be requested in an RS-75 neighborhood. After some reluctance to answer my question, Mr. Creel told me that there was an understanding by the PC that it would, uh, allow for short-term rentals, I assumed only. So now, we are here with a rezone of an RS-75 property in an RS-75 neighborhood with a conditional use for a commercial activity of short-term rental. I'm a little confused in what or who we are supposed to believe or trust. Why does Mr. Creel seem to be adjusting the LDO for his use, not for the citizens he is supposed to be protecting? After attending about twenty of these meetings, I'm beginning to see a trend of how we change the rules to fit your current whim. This, to me, is an insult to the long-term citizens that have lived in the historic one-hundred-year-old neighborhoods, raising their family and enjoying their grandchildren as well. It hasn't been easy for the always some hurricane or other event getting in our way, but it's where we choose to live. The Navists have worked hard trying to preserve the culture of the long-term historic neighborhoods, because we want future generations to be able to enjoy the peace and quiet of these neighborhoods, as was passed down to us. Now the city seems to be telling us, the citizens, that you have changed your minds, and we just have to adjust to you destroying our neighborhoods. Doing all the commercial business will change the family environment that currently exists. You seem to forget that you are here to serve us, not the other way around. I felt safe in my neighborhood, at least until you charged, started changing the rules. I'm sorry, but as a lifelong resident of Biloxi with over five generations in this neighborhood, I resent your intrusion in our neighborhoods. If you continue the path you're going, you will destroy what makes Biloxi the place people want to live, a peaceful, simple life with all the amenities close by, but not in our A neighborhood. In late twenty-twenty-two, four zones, CB, RB, waterfront, and downtown, were changed to be permitted for short-term rental. Move your efforts there and stop ruining what historic neighborhoods we have left before it's too late. Once you destroy the character of these neighborhoods, it will be gone forever. I think the time that you, the elected officials, start some conversations with your residential citizens. I, for one, am tired of being jerked around from meeting to meeting, fighting for my right to can you live in a quiet, safe, peaceful, family-oriented neighborhood? My suggestion is to table this request and stop immediately the attacks on the historic, well-established neighborhoods. Let us grow then with new citizens who want what we have, not what you want. Work with the citizens of these neighborhoods to come to a workable solution, we deserve that much from you. I personally would like to go back to enjoying my retirement in my neighborhood. Right now, I feel like I'm working three jobs, one of which is to save my quality of life. Remember, the citizen Biloxi are the we, and we are Biloxi. Now, I was going to go ahead, George requested I give you the, the statutes related to these The first one is the rezoning. The Mississippi Statute seventeen and the Biloxi Development Ordinance, section twenty-three two, four-nine B-three, require the requester to prove that there has been a mistake in the original zoning, or there is a public need. These lots rezoned correctly as single-family dwellings and are still a single-family dwelling, just like everything else on Father Ryan Avenue. There are only ingress and egresses on Father Ryan. It has two RM-addressed west beachfront properties on the south, and a block of RM-30 seashore United Methodist Assembly property on the west, addressed to East Chalmers or Leggett Drive. North side of the property is Father Ryan Avenue, in an RS-75 residential neighborhood. The reason forgiven for the zone is to be able to do short-term rental. They are not completely surrounded by RM-30 because they are addressed to Father Ryan, and only access is to the RS-75 neighborhood. All of the property that fronts Father Ryan are listed as RS-75, which makes these lots parts of the family Ryan, Father Ryan neighborhood. Changing this zone to RM-30 will change the character of the RS-75 family, Father Ryan neighborhood. There's a public need, uh, there is no public need for rezoning to allow for short-term rental on Father Ryan, because it will cause the change in the character of that neighborhood. The short-term rental market is almost saturated as it is. We definitely not need to open the door for more short-term rental locations that be approved up and down the Father Ryan neighborhood. This could also create the decay in of a well-established, long-term, historic neighborhood, which cannot be restored once destroyed. The other one is the, the conditional use for the short-term rental. The biggest thing there is, uh, the LDO is section twenty-three two, four-D four. It says all nine conditional uses must be met. The first conditional use states that the conditional use is compatible with the character of surrounding lands and the uses permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding land. The short-term rental will not be compatible in an RS-75 neighborhood for it live for a commercial enterprise to operate in the neighborhood. Commercial property is not allowed in RS-75 neighborhoods. Though, to me, conditional use C is not met. Conditional use G states conditional use maintains safe and convenient ingress and egress and traffic flow onto and through the site by vehicles and pedestrians and safe road conditions around the site. Ingress and egress in and out of the property is on one driveway that starts at Father Ryan and goes past the house on the first lot. There seems to be some issues with the lot lines next to the seashore Methodist property adjacent to the duplex lot. This could address some of the area that is being used for the I driveway, which is probably something also that needs to be fixed before this thing is actually approved by anybody. So I'm saying that conditional use G is not met at this point. Conditional use H states the conditional use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. There's a lot of unknown regarding the effect on property values. Most people say it will have an effect if the neighborhood is overloaded with short-term rental. I know it will have a negative effect on the character of this neighbor and reduce its appeal for providing a safe, peaceful, family-oriented neighborhood. So I say conditional use H not met, though in my estimation, from what we're saying, the law says that we can't rezonate and the conditional use is not met. That's all I have. You got any questions, George?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Guines?
Alright, I would, I would like to just, it's on, uh, what George said, the Asgard came with the special needs, and, um, we had a good time there serving Thanksgiving dinner. I also attended a homeless seminar with the Back Bay Mission, and, um, I look forward to maybe going back to Olympia, taking some people with me, uh, to see what they are doing to curb this crisis that they were having. I know we're getting, um, inundated with a lot of, uh, homeless, and we need to probably start looking at that a little bit more. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and...
Bill, what'd you say, you going back to where?
Oh, I was looking forward to going back to Olympia, where they, they have a solution.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and...
So that's the reason you're going back?
Yeah, well, I want to go back. Yeah. And I got a hat from the Fire Department, I look forward to Christmas having one from the Police Department. Thank you.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Uh, is Mr. Labata here?
She's out of town, Robert Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith. We had, um, a boil water notice for a portion of Pops Ferry Road, can you give me an update on that?
Yeah, they, uh, should be doing the second round of testing, then it'll be lifted once that passes.
Okay.
What happened was, uh, there was a break at Summer Chase Apartments, and there wasn't a way to isolate it without shutting off a portion of Pops Ferry. Uh, they never completely lost water pressure on all of Pops Ferry, but out of precaution, we did the boil water, just for safety purposes.
Okay, thank you. Um, my colleague said it was lifted yesterday at four-thirty. Okay. I must have missed that as well, um, but thank you for the update. Okay, thanks. Mr. Abide, um, just one, one question, one recommendation for the way we run meetings. Um, I've always thought that it would come back to bite us when we start using our time to bring individuals up, um, and we've most conveniently used it to bring professionals up to help us understand certain situations, but now if we're starting to call people in opposition to items, I could ask anyone out here to come up and speak for an unlimited amount of time, kind of defeats the purpose of public comments. And so I don't know if there's a way that we can craft a rule that restricts us from deliberately using the, the council's time to subvert the three-minute limit on public comments.
I mean, uh, there's, there's a section on council reports, and that could be modified if the council decides to limit it to a certain amount of time, or...
If you could email me that section, just so I could review it, I may shoot some suggestions over to the remainder of the council to see how they feel about it.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Tisdale? Uh, several things. Sanger Theater, interior, we're still looking for funding, correct, on that?
We're looking for what needs to be, what's remaining, we're getting a bill of materials on what we need to do, we have some estimates on re-rigging the, the, the tower, as well as surfacing the, the floor, and then restoring the seats, and, and getting a plan that would, you know, open the thing, hopefully in the next twelve months with regard to, uh, the dance recitals and some of those other things, but still having the ability to move it to the next level with some of the AV and, and other, uh, thing. We're actually gathering up what would, what is needed, a bill of materials, and, uh, what we go, and then we'll, uh, seek, uh, you know, some funding from various ways, and maybe do some fundraising. So that's the status, right? Now, the, the, uh, the Sanger is complete as far as the exterior, the, you know, envelope is, is sealed, and, uh, we're ready to begin the, the final push.
So the original seats, that, they've been removed because of the work that was done, but they're gonna be moved back in?
Two things, yes.
Are hydraulics involved anywhere on the interior?
To replace it.
Okay, good deal.
On the deck that was there, but actually resurfacing the deck before we reinstall it, and the walls.
So when you walk in, you, you go down like you used to?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Next thing, my favorite topic of the quarter is the IP parking lot, it's been four months. We, we've not granted them a variance, they've been in, in violation of, uh, uh, the code for a number of years now.
We had a meeting, uh, we had a meeting with the Vince Schwartz about what their plan was, you know, the original, uh, coating, uh, of, of the ceiling of that, uh, that, uh, parking space was about six, probably maybe eight million now. Uh, they're drawing up some plans that would, uh, do at least the perimeter, talking about two million dollars worth of, of, uh, landscaping and, and dressing up, but still retaining some of those things, and they're waiting to present that to us, so we can present that to you, with regard to, uh, not really seeing, uh, the rocks, this limestone that's out there right now, but they do have a need to preserve some of the, some of that with regard to heavy-duty, uh, trucks, and they do a pretty good amount of business, as well as the, uh, manufactured homes things that's coming up in March.
Rough idea of when they may be getting us something?
Couple of months, this, this thing is in, uh, March, uh, this, they have about forty-five homes that they rebuilt on, on that, so next few months, we should have, uh, some solid plans on that. Yeah, well, they, it does bring up a huge, uh, number of room nights to, to the show, but I think they did about thirty, uh, manufactured homes that were sold, right after the show.
Right, okay.
So in the next, you know, few weeks, I would think we'd get a plan on when we would actually become, uh, you know, uh, biddable.
Okay. New topic, Boomtown Casino, there at the corner of Elder and Lemieux Street, you've got Garnville Elementary on the southwest corner, and, and that RV is catty-corner from that on the northeast corner. They were supposed to do some landscaping, I, I think they've been on that property now, using it for RVs for probably three or four years, maybe, Mr. Creel, and I'm thinking, aren't they supposed to have some sort of vegetative screening or something? I think that was part of the plan. I don't think there's anything there, very little, are they gonna...
I was done, but I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the...
Okay, and you had mentioned Zach, who's the city harborsman, uh, he's doing a terrific job, I speak with him, just from what I've seen at the planning commission meetings, it was a good hire. Any idea when we might be talking about an employee pay raise?
No.
Okay, I'll ask you again next week, so be thinking about it.
You know, we're thinking about things, and we're running numbers, and we're, you know, looking for, at some projections, uh, unanticipated or, uh, anticipated projections between now and, in the first quarter, but, you know, our, our intent was to come up with some idea of what it's gonna take to do what we do in January, but I'm not, you know, at a point where I can...
I know, you did, well, you didn't know I was gonna pose the question, so I appreciate that.
Well, you know, we, in July, in, in the, uh, September situation, we were gonna look at hard, you know, between, in the FY year and, and the first of the calendar year, to come up with a, a possible, uh, you know, scenario, uh, but, uh, I'm not really, you know, in, in a point to do this, but we can, you know, I'll give you an update by the next meeting.
Okay, I, I'd just love to have a really good discussion, maybe a workshop on it, just to talk about where we're going and what we're trying to do, because we're having a hard time competing in some positions, is my understanding, particularly law enforcement, and, uh, I think we're okay generally speaking, but we just need to fill some vacancies that we have. Um, last thing is, have a terrific Thanksgiving, Mr. Mayor.
You as well.
Appreciate you, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Hey, Paul, could I ask a question about the raise to the mayor?
Sure, I'm done, George, go ahead. Yeah, I think you have four seconds left.
Alright, three percent would cost how much? Let's see, for January, beginning January, three percent raise?
Four point seven million. About one point seven million.
Okay, so if we put that in effect, that's, we'd have to come with one point seven...
Well, you know, give me, yeah, roughly, but, you know, you know, you gotta offset that, you know, we are on a tight, you know, revenue versus expense right now, and, uh, there's other things happening, avenues that we're restoring, especially when it comes to first responders, that would, uh, offset that, you know, where are you gonna get the revenue? Out of the air, and, and so, I, you know, everybody understands that we've gotta compete, we've gotta have the best position we could be in, but it's, it's not magical, so I'll give, I'll be prepared to give you some scenarios by the next reading, week, next meeting, next week, I guess, that, uh, would be up to you to say, where, where do we go?
Cause I think it, it makes a big difference with the overtime and the pay that we're costing us right now, so we have to just look at all that.
Nobody knows, you know, that better than I do, on what, what it takes to do what we gotta do, every day, twenty-four, seven.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Glavin?
Thank you. Uh, first up, uh, I understand that the Army Corps of Engineers is, uh, starting to send letters, uh, to residents in and around the Brazier Bayou Sunrise, uh, Bayou Project. Um, I know it's, it's labeled a letter of, um, uh, commentary or a letter of comment, uh, just to see what the public has to say about that, uh, project or proposed project. Uh, there's still an obstacle to overcome, which is, uh, the funding. If we get approved for that dredging because of the submerged aquatic vegetation, I, I just want to make sure that if they do approve us, are we kind of lining up that funding with Go Mesa and tidling funds in the future? Is that something that's, uh, on our radar?
Yeah, it, it's on our radar, but the mitigation is the biggest thing. We've actually identified where, uh, it's, if you pull it up in one place and you can replant it in another place, right there by, uh, uh, Goat Island, it was identified, I don't know how many acres, about a hundred acres that we would replace there? I'm not sure how many, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, we've identified the, the place where we would, you know, put it, but, uh, not the specifics.
Okay. Several years ago, we, we actually had everything in place to go into this area and dredge, and then that kind of stopped us, that the SAV, uh, after they did the test and they discovered it, that kind of put everything to a halt. At the time, we had the funding, but the additional funding is for the mitigation, the three-for-one. We, do we have enough funding to go in and dredge? Is the additional funding for...
Application for funding is what we would do.
Application for funding, okay. I, go ahead, Mike, you got something?
Next, next round's still making forty-seven.
Okay. I, I just don't want to lose sight of that, and we get, you know, we kind of, uh, you know, we, we earmark some, uh, funding from those funds, and then we, we don't forget about this dredging project, because the citizens have been waiting patiently to see if they can dredge out some of these, uh, bayous so that they can use their waterfront property, and in turn, it increases the value of their property, which helps property taxes, uh, you know, for the city.
You know, back, you know, on, on a couple of restoration situation, we had two million to do that, then they dropped the, you know, the vegetation issue on it, but we, we continued to move, but that, that money has long since went away to actually do the dredging, uh, but, you know, engineering, uh, has been, you know, on, on it, pretty, uh, pretty intense to, to get it, so when the triggers pull, we get the money and do the deal, do the surveying and so forth, uh, so, yeah, we took that fifty miles of, uh, waterfront that, you know, is valuable, with, when you have access to it, you know, it makes it even better.
We got a town hall meeting I'm gonna be scheduling, and I'm sure there's gonna be some residents that want some information, so perhaps we can get engineering and, uh, the mayor and Mike there to kind of answer some of those questions as we move forward. Um, just a couple more things, uh, so recently, uh, there's some development in Savannah Estates on some housing, I just need clarification of a couple of things, and I don't know if planning or Jerry or engineering can help with... or engineering can help with this. So if we have a housing development, neighborhood development now, they're required to put taps in in advance of the development, yes or no? Is it an optional or they are required to do that now?
Required to do.
Okay, prior to some time, they weren't required to do that, is that?
No.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
The way that subdivision development works is that once the preliminary plat has been approved, you know, here's the design of what we want to do. Once that's been approved by the city council, then the project goes into the hands of engineering who reviews the construction plans for putting in the infrastructure for all of the lots that are in there. So when that underground water sewer go in, there are taps put at each one of the lots so that once all of that is done to the engineer's satisfaction, then Robert or Christie will send me a letter or email telling me that they're satisfied that the infrastructure has been put into their satisfaction and that we're allowed to bring that plat back to the city council for what's called final plat approval, showing that everything's ready for them to start building houses. Only after the council approves the final plat am I allowed to issue permits to build a house on there.
So what's coming into play here and specifically for Savannah and I'm sure other residential development or new homes, new acquisitions, and this brand new home being built in Savannah, the tap fee or the cut-in fees or the irrigation fees are, it seems some of it moves around. Well, there may be some set fees for irrigation fees, et cetera, but there seems to be, depending on the length that they have to run some piping from the house or whatever, those fees fluctuate. And that's in existing homes, that shouldn't be, it should be more consistent in new build, new subdivisions that are built now, right?
But yes, sir. Now, let me talk about Savannah for just a minute. Remember that originally those lots that were along the water were going to be multifamily storage buildings, and they came back to us after the fact, after all the infrastructure was in and everything else, and had those changed to be just single family lots. Remember too, that Savannahs had just opened the doors when Hurricane Katrina hit, so there could be some confusion there on that.
The codes were different.
Yes, sir.
And to there now, okay. All right, so the irrigation, I want to clarify the irrigation because it's more than just a $50 tap fee.
Rest, it's not $50, it's the cost of the material and labor not to exceed $200 or not to be less than $200.
Not to be less than $200, so it's a minimum of $200?
$20 in the ordinance.
All right, because that's been confusing to some folks that say I'm going to put an irrigation fee in for 50, or irrigation tap in or whatever for 50 bucks, and that's been confusing some folks as well. But, all right, I don't know if that solved anything, but I appreciate it.
Councilman, let me get with you separately.
Okay, all right. And like my colleagues on the council, I'd like to wish all the directors, the mayor, and all the employees and our citizens a very, very nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Jerry, no chief, I don't need, after the meeting, I just want to get with you on a couple of things, and then Mike also. Other than that, I have no report. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. That will end our council reports. We'll now move to our public agenda, citizens' comments. We will have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person will be allowed three minutes. When the bell rings, your time is up. When you come forward, please sign the form on the table and state your name and address. We'll start on my left side of the room, your right side of the room. Would anyone on my left side of the room like to speak? Please come forward, sign in and state your name.
My name is Michael Cavanaugh at 134 St. Jude Street, and I'd like to speak in opposition to the result, not the resulting, the conditional approval for the short-term rental off of Father Ryan. I represent a number of districts of that area and I live right off of Father Ryan, and we're just not in favor of an additional short-term rental. Primarily, my concern, and I think a number of the neighbors is ingress and egress, the current driveway that they have for the short-term rental, which is behind the main property, encroaches on the United Methodist Assembly property fairly, I call it significantly. I mean, it's very obvious where the property line should be and where the driveway is. The driveway is almost, it's concrete on each side with brick pavers and then gravel in the middle, so it's fairly permanent, or, you know, it's a pretty decent construction. The diagram of the property that was presented to the planning commission that showed the location of the driveway is totally wrong. It does, it shows the existing driveway going to the back property within the property itself. That's not true that it goes and veers into the Seashore Manor property significantly. So essentially, the document that was, the planning commission based our approval on is incorrect. And I've got a diagram that I want to enter into the record so that you guys could see exactly where the difference is. So given that, I think that the planning commission approved something that really did not, really did not meet all the conditional uses specified in the document, specified in the planning document. I think that, I think we have some representatives from United Methodist Assembly here as well. They have not agreed on any kind of resolution with the property owner. If the driveway cannot be utilized, then it, or if there's no resolution, that driveway cannot be used because it's not wide enough. So they would have to basically put a new driveway directly in front of their house, a couple of feet off their front steps. So given all of that, I would recommend the denial of the conditional use. Also for the United Methodist folks, they are meeting, their board of directors or trustees are meeting next week, Tuesday, to discuss the issue, so they haven't even come to any kind of agreement internally yet. So I think all those factors, I don't think we're ready for a short-term rental there, so happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Please come forward and state your name, sign in at the table.
My name is George Berger IV, and I live at 175 Miramar Avenue. I'm here to oppose the proposed short-term rental or whatever you would like to call it, 1387 Father Ryan. One of the concerns I have with regarding it is looking at what is permitted. An assisted living facility slash group home, that could include a halfway house where somebody recovering from different problems could go. And I would, and part of it was drugs, alcohol, et cetera. And a couple of weeks ago, my godmother came into town and she was, we were talking about some, we were just talking, and she mentioned about how in Baton Rouge, some of the nicest neighborhoods that are in that city have been overrun with halfway houses, and they own a hair salon near some of those halfway houses. And one day, she was going into the shop and she saw a man with a needle in his arm outside of her shop, and she had to call the police to have him removed. We want that happening right outside our Biloxi Upper Elementary, which is right next door to, right next door. Do you think our teachers would want to see that? Our parents, would their kids to see that? I don't think they would. I ride long distance, my bike and I like to ride along Father Ryan, it's a nice street that y'all have just repaved. I don't want to see that. I don't think my dad would want me to see that. Why do we want, why would we want to allow that in the future to occur? Thank you.
Anyone else on my left? Please sign in and state your name and address.
I'm here today to talk about Christmas on the water, to give you all a little history, and then I got a second part of it when I get finished. This is 38th year for Christmas on the water. For the first 20 years, we decorated and built the ornaments that's on the town green. We orchestrated and brought back the children's parade on Friday nights, which has grown to quite a size now. Our children's parade on Friday night, we do hay wagons for the kids, for the public, Biloxi Public Schools, first to third graders. They show up, they don't have to dress, they don't have to bring anything. We got beads and candy, they enjoy it, they ride in hay wagons. Kelly Steps is going to do their production again with 60 kids on Friday night. Basically, on Saturday night is the boat parade, starts at 6 o'clock, fireworks after that. Over the years, we haven't missed a parade since 86. We did, in 84, we had 86 boats. In '05, after the storm, we had five boats, but we continue to do that. We have been through a lot, just like the city. '05 was a storm, '08 was a financial crisis, '10 was an oil spill, and COVID come on, but we've been here every year. We appreciate y'all's support and hope you'll continue that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left, your right? Anyone else on my left, your right? Please sign in and state your name and address.
My name is Matt Ward, 166 Jefferson Davis Avenue. Same story that I come in here each time we're voting on short-term rental. I do oppose, again, I have a perfect property would be set up for that. I moved here thinking I was going to do that, but since moving here, I've gotten involved in the neighborhood, and today is a vacation day for me. I had big projects I wanted to do, but I stopped them at midday, got a shower just to show up here to represent my neighborhood because we oppose it as a group, and we hope that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right? Anyone else on my left, your right? We'll now move to the right side of the room, anyone? Okay, I'm sorry.
Letting everybody finish.
Okay, please sign in.
I did.
Okay.
My name is Greg Muro, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Lawrence, I've met you all. I haven't met everybody else, and I'm looking forward to doing that. I live at 1388 Beach Boulevard, directly south of Jeff and Tien's property. We are but to it. Since I don't have notes, and I wasn't made aware of this until Friday, for some reasons of address changes the planning commission is trying to fix, I want to express my thoughts. I have two children, they're professionals in the medical field, I have six grandbabies, I'm a primary resident and a registered voter here. We are opposed to the short-term rental, and I'll tell you why. I spoke with Jeff and Tien on Sunday extensively, and they explained to me what their plans were, and they are trying to rent to the base members. On occasion, they have somebody that's going to be there shorter than the required time by the city. At first, I said, well, that's not a big deal, but where the problem lies with this is we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know if they're going to sell. If they're not, that's fine, nobody knows what the future is, but anybody else that takes over this property could do what they want with it. I have six grandbabies that run around in my backyard, and I do not want short-term rentals, although I don't, I just don't want it. It's not going to be good for the neighborhood. In addition to that, my next-door neighbor Lisa Hunt, her husband Jared Hunt, he works for Chevron in Kavaskan, they are opposed to it as well. They're not here, but they couldn't be, but I could get her on the phone if you need me to, and I could say, put her on speaker, and she would tell you exactly what I'm telling you. Do I need to do that? Okay, so that's my thoughts here. I don't know where else to go with it, but we prefer not to have that happen.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move to the right side of the room. Please come forward, sign in and state your name.
I am Jaclyn Wilson, and I am the owner of Biloxi Beach Resort Rentals, and I'm also a lifelong resident of Biloxi. I've been here on many occasions to oppose short-term rentals where I feel that they do not belong. This is one of them. I belong that, I believe that Father Ryan is a very special place and that we should not have short terms there. There is a time and a place for short terms, and our residential neighborhoods is not one of them. Some of the things that I've heard about this property owner is that they want to do military. Let me enlighten you on how military works. They are not allowed to book through Airbnb and VRBO or Booking.com. It is stated in the GTR. There is a MFR that states this, it is all public knowledge, I can email you all this information. They do this because it is not, the fees that are associated with these sites are not allowed to be reimbursed by the government. Not only that, but the government wants to make sure that who they are booking through are true people, that they are not being scammed, things like that. So how I'm able to do it is, I'm a true company, I have a website, they book through me, and we accommodate them with the fees. And there's other things that you have to do to accommodate the military, there's paperwork you have to give them every month, things like that. So for him to be able to get military, he has to have word of mouth pushing military to him, or someone on base that's going to get him military. They can't find you on a third-party platform. Even if they have a connection, if I myself get a military person who's less than 30 days, I put them in a place that is zoned for less than 30 days, even if they're military. It doesn't make a difference, they're a short-term rental. You know, that to me doesn't, I don't care if they're military. If they're here for 22 days, they're going somewhere that's zoned correctly. The percentage of military who are here for that long is probably about 5%. Their classes are averaged two to three months, if not longer, on Keesler, so it's very, very few who are here for short-term, looking for less than 30 days. I truly believe that if you rezone this to be RM30, where is it going to stop? Sure, there's some RM30 around it, but then maybe the next person's going to want it, and the next person, and then all of Father Ryan will be MR30. And finally, I believe that the city seriously needs to look into a temporary moratorium on short-term rentals. We need to look at our rules and really think about the ordinances that we have in place before we continue to issue more conditional uses in our beautiful historic neighborhoods. And that is all. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Please come forward, sign in, state your name and address.
My name is Michael Hedgepath, I live at 126 Chalmers Drive. I am the executive director of Seashore United Methodist Assembly, that most of the property they're talking about, the ingress for the short-term rental goes through. I have spoken with the couple about the property. They came in, bought the property. They have built a drive that comes over on Seashore property. They did not ask, they did not get permission. It has not been approved by the Board of Trustees of Seashore United Methodist Assembly for them to use that property. I believe earlier you were told that they will be, that we will have a meeting Tuesday, and we will address the issue as what to do there. But they came in and poured concrete over on the property, put bricks down, and then put gravel in between it. That comes there. The second part of that is that issue hasn't been taken care of. The second part is, is my back door faces right out to the two units that they are discussing, that they want to do the short-term rental. Mr. Muro spoke and said that he has six grandkids. Well, I have five that are right there. He has a fence that is enclosed. I do not have a fence that is enclosed. I have a fence, but it's not set off. Therefore, I would oppose at this time that that property be used. Therefore, I would oppose at this time that that property be used and set as RM30. I think that was all I wanted to say.
What was your name again?
Michael Hedgepath.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right or in the back of the room? Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone else in the room? All right? If not, citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to our policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance to amend the Biloxi Land Development Ordinance pertaining to recreational vehicle parks.
I'll move it.
I'll second that, that's a first reading. Ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend the Biloxi Land Development Ordinance pertaining to storage or parking of heavy trucks, trailers, major recreational equipment, or mobile homes.
I'll move it.
I'll second that, it's also a first reading. Item C.
Ordinance to amend the Biloxi Land Development Ordinance pertaining to special events.
Move it.
I'll second that, that's also a first reading. Item D.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for two parcels of land from RS75 medium-density single-family residential to RM30 high-density multifamily residential for 1387 and 1397 AMB Father Ryan Avenue.
I'm gonna have a discussion.
It's already been moved.
It's already been moved. Okay, so who was?
Laura Glavine.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence?
Well, we had, first of all, you know, a lot of people opposing this project, and the main thing is, there was not a mistake in the zoning. The original zoning was all .75, now I've said our neighborhood's all .75. So by the state law, there was no mistake in the zoning. That's the first thing. The second is definitely, we don't need a need for another duplex setup instead of Biloxi for short-term rentals. So that's the main two things in our state law that you have to have to change the zone, and they don't meet either one of those. So I would recommend that, I can't support this the way it's written, I can't support it all, because we need to stay with the state law, the city law. No need, and there's no mistake in the zoning. That's the first two, every time we deal with these things.
Okay. All right, Mr. Glavine, anything?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Lawrence, and if this does fail, there's a resolution right behind it, basically that doesn't require to be moved, but we'll see where it goes after discussion.
All right, Mr. Guns, you have anything?
Yeah, I just think it's too far off. I'll support you on John Nelsone.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. Demming?
With regard just to this ordinance change, I do think there's a need for more housing in Biloxi. So, aside from discussing short-term rentals, because that's not what's in this ordinance, so I'm not gonna address the economic necessities of short-term rentals regarding Resolution E, but D, could we not, we could approve this change to create a duplex without then approving a short-term rental, correct?
You don't have to have a choice. Yes, I've got some stuff I'd like to show you real quick. I'd like to address some of the things that Mr. Lawrence's sister brought up, that, you know, need to be clarified. So, if y'all would give me that opportunity, I'll address it. First of all, the statement that was made about Planning Commission taking the position that they didn't feel like the property, a property needs to be, the zoning changed, and then have a conditional use approval for it. That statement was made by David Stanovich at a meeting several years ago when we first started dealing with short-term rental. And ironically, David Stanovich is the only vote from the Planning Commission that voted against this property, because he felt that way, not the entire Planning Commission, and that was repeated. As far as this property line dispute goes, I've talked with the owners of the property, and they have a driveway that goes right beside their house. If you look, if you look at the design that's in your packet, it shows the driveway that comes right beside their house. Now, those lines that are further to the right are not a driveway. Those lines that are further to the right are just dimensional standards that show how long the property is. The, so the driveway is not in question, I've talked to them about it. There's actually a fence that comes along Seashore's property there, now they may own property, and I'm not gonna dispute that, they may own property further to the west of this, to the east of this, but it was not enclosed in the fence that has been put up there along those properties next to it. But let me, if you will, I wanna show you some things about the property, and then I've got some other comments to make, and then, you know, however y'all votes, fine with us. The property in question is the one yellow strip of property that is absolutely surrounded by RM30. This is on the west end of Father Ryan Avenue, and across the street is the school, across the street, directly across the street is the naderatorium. Just to the west of them is Seashore Methodist Assembly, which essentially is short-term rental, because there are people constantly coming and going to that place. Their office is actually in a house right across the property line. The gentleman that spoke that lives on Beach Boulevard, and I understand, you know, they've just built a nice house there, but for years, the house right next door was a short-term rental, the one that Lucy Denton used to live in. It was a licensed short-term rental. Now, the new owners, I understand, don't wanna do short-term rental there, but all of those are included in that RM30 property. If this were in the middle of a single-family zone neighborhood, I would have highly discouraged the owners from even applying for it. But this is a textbook case for a zoning change. It's surrounded on all three sides by RM30. Because this is conditional use, and you know, again, this has come before the council several times, and we've tried to make the argument that if you don't want short-term rental in multifamily residential, just take it out, and that'll solve the problem. But every time we brought it back before the Planning Commission and the City Council, it gets turned down. So the law is, is that it's allowed in RM20 and RM30 zoning as conditional use. The, the couple that own this property, they're living on the property, they live in one of the houses, they're not, this is not a property they're buying somewhere, and they just built three right across the street from my office over there, and they are very well-kept. We've had no problems whatsoever with them. The property's clean, it's very quiet, you'd never know that they were there being used for short-term rental, but they are licensed short-term rentals. The conditional use aspect of this, and we talk about this all the time, was so that the City Council can consider each property on a case-by-case basis to look at it, not to come back and refight the short-term rental argument all over again. Every time that this comes to the table, we have people that live nowhere near the property, that come in and are arguing, you know, that it's gonna destroy the neighborhood. And you know, even though the law is not very clear about what the neighborhood is, I think in a, in a certain way, they do, because by law, by state law, we're required to send out mail-outs to anyone that lives within 250 feet of the property, and then the topic of supermajority has just come up, and what to, in order to get a supermajority, you've got to get at least 20% of the people who live within 160 feet of the property. So I think in a, in a nonspecific way, the state law determines what the boundaries of the neighborhood are, and certainly with the 250 feet where we're required to advertise.
All right. Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, this is the property that we're talking about, you can still see the cross-sat lines. You see that right across the street, directly across the street is a naderatorium, a major traffic generator seven days a week. So this is not a residential neighborhood. The closest houses to this property are facing the next street over, which is St. Francis, I think that's St. Francis there, if I'm reading it right. That's the nearest houses, and then the ones, of course, that face Beach Boulevard, and we've talked about houses that face Beach Boulevard. How can you expect sanctuary from commercial uses if you actually live on Highway 90, the busiest commercial corridor, you know, in Harrison County and probably some other counties? You've got the school, you've got the naderatorium, you've got the Seashore Methodist Assembly, which is right facing Chalmers. Their business office is right there between this property and Chalmers, facing in. You've constantly got people coming and going there. On the east side of this property, it's vacant, and it's zoned RM30. Someone could come in right now and build apartments on that property, and would not even have to come to the Planning Commission and the City Council in order to do that, because the zoning is already correct for what they wanna do. These owners are not proposing any changes to the property, they're gonna live in one house, and the other house would be used, and it's already a duplex, so they would be using that for the short-term rental. The, the zoning change, the zoning change, anytime that you have property next door that is already zoned, this is one of the strong arguments in state law, that if all you're doing is extending a zoning that already exists, then you don't have to meet the arguments, the normal arguments that you'd have to meet. We're already surrounded by RM30, we're an island here in the middle of it. So that makes a clear argument that there was probably a mistake in the original zoning. In other words, why would all the surrounding zoning be RM30? And this one duplex that's grandfathered in is not. The conditional use, and we talk about this a good bit, and I wanna, I wanna cover this for just a minute, if you'll, if you'll do it. We talk about, well, it doesn't meet the nine criteria, okay? A couple of the criteria are the same. It says a conditional, number one, conditional use complies with all the applicable zoning district standards. That's the ones that has to do with parking, and lighting, and those kind of things to make sure that they're not creating a problem for the others. The second one says that it complies with all the standards in Section 2343. That is the short-term rental section of the ordinance. The third one is, the conditional use is compatible with the character of the surrounding lands and the uses permitted in the zoning district of the surrounding lands. I've just told you what this property is surrounded by. All of these are commercial uses. All right, item D, the conditional use avoids significant adverse economic odor, noise, glare, vibration impacts on surrounding lands regarding refuse collection, service delivery, parking and loading, signs, lighting, and other site elements. As I just told you, they're proposing no changes to the property. It will look and operate like a residential property other than the short-term rental. The next one, the conditional use is configured and designed to screen, buffer, otherwise minimize adverse visual impacts on adjacent land. Well, since they're not making any changes, there are no adverse, adverse impacts, visual impacts on the adjacent land. The conditional use avoids significant deterioration of water, air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources. There's certainly nothing about this that's gonna adversely impact that. Item G, the conditional use maintains safe and convenient ingress and egress and traffic flow onto and through the site by vehicles and pedestrians with safe road conditions. There is a driveway right next to this house that is clearly on their piece of property. Their piece of property is 82 feet wide, and they have a driveway that not only comes into their house, but actually goes to the house that's south of theirs. The conditional use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. And I just mentioned to you that right next door, they can build apartments, 30 units per acre, on the property right next door that's vacant right now. And then the last one, the conditional use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. A lot of these things are not things that you can say, if this is done, this is definitely the impact it's gonna have. That's why this is conditional use, is so that if some of these things do happen after they take it over, then the Planning Commission and the City Council has the ability to go back and reconsider the conditional use permit that's issued on this property. Again, I would say, and I know that this was the Planning Commission's thinking, if this were located down on the other end of Father Ryan, where it's surrounded by single-family zone property and single-family houses, then I would have never suggested to them that, that, you know, they should pursue this. But the fact that they are on a piece of property that's surrounded by RM30 zoning, and the fact that there are no residential houses on any blocks adjacent to this, and that there are commercial uses all around it that generate a lot of traffic, I believe the Planning Commission, that's the reason they voted 12 to 1 to approve this, with only Mr. Stanovich abstaining. So anyway, the City Council, part of my responsibility, I believe, as a director, is to make sure that when the City Council votes, you vote on fact, and not on emotions, and not on passion, and those kind of things, and not on false information. So whether you vote this up or down is up to you, we live with whatever decision y'all make in the department. But I just feel like that for, for months, since we've been battling this short-term rental thing, there's a lot of things that have been mis-said, a lot of quotes that have been misquoted about what's going on, and because my name was brought up, I felt the need to get up here and to clarify some of these things before you make your decision on this.
Jerry, thank you. I still have some more. What's the difference between RM20 and RM30?
20 just means that you can have 20 units per acre, and 30 means that you're allowed 30 units per acre, if you're building a multifamily facility.
So there is, there's no other difference other than the amount of units?
They're both multifamily zoning.
And they have the same, all the other characteristics of applicability are the same?
They would still, anybody that came in to develop this vacant property next door, or if they come in and decide to change something, they're gonna have to go through the process. They'll have to go to DRC in order to, for us to look at what they're proposing, to make sure it complies with all the regulations.
Thank you, Jerry, that's all I have for you. I don't know, if you wanna say better, if anybody else has?
Just one other, one other slide that we have, just, just to shake.
I'm gonna ask Jerry some questions too, when you finish.
Can you go to the next one, Kerry? If you look at this, we tried to clean this up, you know, and take the trees and everything off of it, so that you can see the uses that are around the piece of property. You can see how close they are to rental properties, the Seashore Office, the Seashore United Methodist Assembly, the Leggett Memorial. Again, that's, you might as well consider that short-term rental, because there are people coming and going there all the time, they're constantly having training sessions there. It does show the house on the south end as a short-term rental, and we understand that the new owner is, is not using that as short-term rental. So that's an error. Across the street, the naderatorium, and the Biloxi Elementary School, so you can see what this is surrounded by.
Councilman Lawrence, you mind if I go before you do? Cause I'm, I'll be short.
Go ahead.
And I just wanna address a couple of comments, Director, and no disrespect to the facts, but we are passionate with our votes. We passionately talk to our constituents and tell them that we're gonna represent them, and we're gonna do what's best for Biloxi, and we're gonna weigh the facts in the process. The fact is, this is not used by right, this is conditional use, and there are those tests. And in your very testimony, you said, if there's some problems with whoever takes over and starts to develop this, this property as short-term rental, then we can address it after the fact. And, and so I think what we're being charged with is, how do we avoid doing that and making the right choice today, and not necessarily, if there's a risk, and there's something we need to preserve, because there are a significant amount of single residents home by it, the west or the east? We're still trying to make that decision. So, thank you, Councilman Lawrence, for just allowing me a minute.
Okay. I was gonna ask you some questions, Jerry, but honestly, I'd just soon put this to the vote, and just set this off the table. So I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Demming had a couple.
With all due respect, it was still my time, you guys co-opted it, but, I do not need a hug, but thank you. Nonetheless, I didn't have anything else for Jerry, and that's why I allowed you guys to continue to go, because I didn't wanna occupy Jerry's time as much. First, George Burdrow, the third, fourth, the third, he did a great job with the fourth, very articulate. I don't know if you're just well-prepared, and that's why you didn't look nervous, or you're just a natural, either way, great job. Couple of things I do wanna address that you did bring up, was the concern for halfway houses? Now, I want you and everyone else to understand that this does not permit Now, I want you and everyone else to understand that this does not permit or allow halfway houses or Section Eight housing. Those are allowed regardless of the zoning or the area. And trust me, war four and some of our nicer neighborhoods, we have a couple Oxford houses, and we've tried to fight them, and we have not prevailed. And so these halfway houses can appear anywhere. So can Section Eight. Section Eight can, Section Eight can be allowed anywhere as well. We don't have the right to stop that. So these properties in these areas that we don't allow to be used the way the owner wants to use them, you should watch what we wish for. I don't know if that's the right euphemism, but nonetheless, it won't prevent the halfway house issue or even Section Eight, whether we pass or deny this, this resolution. And lastly, I am going to support the change for the ordinance as well as the next one. And I'm going to talk about the next one, even though I didn't want to because they're two separate issues. But the, the arguments against short-term rental that I hear come from people that don't live within what I refer to as, as the neighborhood. And so that's not persuasive, nor is it persuasive for somebody else that was going to use short-term rental and then changed their mind but bought property for that same use. So I don't think that I've heard anything persuasive enough for me to, in good faith, deny these applications. That's just one of seven. I'm now finished.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes. Cecilia, can you go back to the first slide?
Which, uh, Carrie?
Oh, Carrie, could you go? How did she do that? Could you, first slide, okay. Can you make that a little bigger just to focus on the block that we're talking about, the location we're talking about? If you can't, that's okay. I don't want to-
Not from here.
It can't be done. You said it can't be done. Okay. So let's look at, at the, that little sliver of whatever color that is, salmon or peach or whatever, in a sea of green on, between Highway ninety and Father Ryan Avenue. So that, that sliver is residential, this particular property we're speaking of, and is surrounded by RM thirty residential, multi-family, thirty units per acre. All right. To the right of the lot that we're speaking of, that long strip used to be the Denton property. It's owned RM thirty. It's single-family residential, as a matter of fact. Beg your pardon? Multi-family, right? But, but that is in fact a residential property now because the owner is not going to be using it as a short-term rental. Okay? So, so basically, it's a single-family residence, as a fact.
Change the color.
I know, I know. That, that's just the first block. Thank you. And then we have, then we have Mr. Murrow who spoke, and he is to the bottom of that sliver there, fronting Highway ninety. That is in fact, single-family residential. And then to the left of that, on the corner, that's an empty lot, and it's a long lot. And as I recall before Katrina, that's where some apartments were that were associated with Seashore Manor, Mr. Hedgepath. And then above that is, there are, there are four, four smaller properties, and, and driving through and looking at them, I think one appears to be a residential, maybe a long-term rental, and then one has a sign in front that says office. I'm assuming that's a church office?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Empty office, not a church office.
Gotcha. All right. And then I think it's the two lots at the very top, those are empty now, and they're fractions of an acre. If anybody was going to do anything residential, multi-family, I don't know, maybe you could put a fourplex there or something based on the amount of acreage. My point being that is, in effect, this is all pretty much residential, just based on the fact that people live there. They're not doing anything commercially with the property. I don't know that there's any been, any change in the character of the neighborhood. Basically, I'm going to vote against this rezoning, and that's my reasoning. I mean, to me, it would make more sense for all those RM thirties to go to the Planning Commission and say, hey, we want to rezone to residential because we're all single-family residential with the exception of the, not, not the church office, but the assembly office. Okay. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
All right. You've already made yours. I have no comments, so if we have no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor of item D? All opposed to item D? Item D fails five to two with Mr. Demming.
Two to five.
Yes, two to five. All right. We'll now move to resolution E.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a short-term rental located at thirteen ninety-seven AMB Father Ryan Avenue.
I'm going to move it for discussion.
You don't need to.
We don't need to. I mean, we have to both put, to vote against it. Don't let it die.
If nobody moves it, it dies.
All right. I'll remove that.
Do they have a motion? All right. Item E dies for lack of a motion. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Need a motion on that?
I'll second.
We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, discussion?
Just a couple, uh, just B, B, B.
Bravo, bravo.
Yeah, all bravos.
Three Bs?
Three Bs. I got it.
This is the, the land on a point where it's supposed to be built this high-end hotel, which never happened. And I'm not extending this for a year for twenty-five thousand. You're talking about eight and a half acres of some of the best property the city owns. This property is worth anywhere from ten, eleven million dollars. So just sitting on this and hold this for a year for nothing, because the man has done zero since we passed all this up, changed the sand beach to waterfront, we changed this, we changed everything, they've still done absolutely nothing. To me, I think this ought to just end, and find somebody else who wants to do it, and let's deal with somebody else. So I would like to put that on the table, to vote on it individually, to make sure this thing is gone, and anybody comes in, let them come back and start all over. Hold that for twenty-five thousand for a year? Are you kidding me? Ten million dollars worth of property? Man, that's chump change.
Well, if you, if you read the, the reason for this extension, and you look on page three of the exhibit-
I, I read it.
All right. Well, since April of this year, they've been negotiating with MDAH in Jackson, who's putting restrictions on what they can do before they, they can even start. And the latest sort of conclusion from MDAH is, they would have to put in about a hundred and sixty dollars of archaeology, archaeological digs everywhere there's a dot on the entire property. And they've been in negotiations with them before they could start anything, and that's still to be done. So that's where it is.
This thing is set up to try to turn this into a casino. They're not building a hotel there, no more than I'm building a hotel there. That's why we changed everything to waterfront for a casino. Now they got to get that changed in the state. So no, that's not going to fly. So I'm laying this and holding on this for something, to me, it's just a waste of our time, and that twenty-five thousand plus the other money they spent. So no, that's, that's the fact here.
Yeah. Peter, didn't they find some stuff on there, on the property that they wanted to make sure it was, so they can clear?
Nothing has been found recently, but twenty-five years ago, there was a, a dig of some sort that happened there, and it sort of became, sort of laser-focused for archives and history. The entire site is an archives and history resolution, covenant. The initial thought was that was for the house. And it's still sort of our position is, the house had a historical covenant on it, and MDAH takes the position that it covers the whole property. I mean, they're only building on probably twenty, ten, twenty percent of this property, but they want to dig on the entire property, from Howard to the beach. Every, every a hundred feet of the entire property. And, I mean, in fairness to them, that was not contemplated when we did our, when we did the original deal. And they've been in negotiations with them for the last ten months.
So regardless of what happened, it's, the property still have to be cleared. Even if we get another buyer, we still have to get it cleared through MDH-
That's right.
-before we move forward anyway. So this process has to take place.
Let me answer that question. Well, our thought was too, that, yeah, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that they would pay for, and we would take that off the eight million dollar price once they exercise option. If they don't exercise option, then this is all being done on their nickel.
After Katrina, this piece of property where it's suggested to put the Seafuhr Museum, it would refuse because they run across an Indian burial ground, and you can't build anything on it. And that has never changed. It's still listed as that, and that's what killed the museum being on that property. I know y'all went around-
Before my time, so I don't know.
I'm just saying. So you got a major problem that you can't do nothing, because once, once you do that, you're not getting any help from anybody. You start disturbing Indian burial ground. That's what killed it before.
The properties still have to be cleared, even though they may not use it, still have to be cleared.
You can't clear it. I mean, that's the problem. They're going to, they wasted a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Those are facts. So we already been through that.
So it's unsellable, is what you're saying?
Definitely.
So we just?
Definitely not going to be a casino.
Whether it's unsellable or not, they want to take the risk of doing the, doing the digs and finding out if they can get the property cleared, and then if they can exercise option. But at this point, they're doing the dig on their, on their nickel.
On their dime. We don't lose.
Yeah, we do. If you have passed it, then you give them the money back. So you paying for it. Yeah, you do.
But if they can't build on it, they're not going to buy the property. I'll, 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 I kind of suspect that.
Get the rest of the story. Anyway, whatever y'all think. That was a biggie with me. I can't support that.
Is there anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, finally see where, I like to put this on about the library where we paying sixty-five thousand a month. I always wanted to know how we did that. Now that it's listed on GGG, where it's sixty-five thousand per month, for the seven hundred and eight thousand that we put up for the library, it's paid monthly. So we thank you for that one. Let me see if there's anything else. The only thing I want to ask, is Walt here?
In the back.
On this, on these P, P, and Q about knee case change orders? Are these change orders being done? Because there's so many things he's supposed to be doing to finish off the project, but I was paying. So if I got to hold this money from him, then I'm going to hold this money from him.
Yes, sir. Well, these three change orders that are on the council agenda today are related to another project area. It's the BEA project area out to the west, not the St. Michael's area, where you have requested, and we have requested knee case complete, a couple of those items that you brought to our attention. The brickwork on Myrtle Street is one of them. Paving the lot at three hundred Howard Avenue is another, at the corner of Oak and Howard. That's been an issue. But these three change orders, like I said, that are on today's council are-
They're not related to this.
No, sir. They're on the other project.
Did we ever go back and fix up the Crawford Street thing to kind of cover some of the holes?
On Crawford?
On Crawford.
He did put in temporary asphalt where those holes were. When the gentleman had, had come up here and complained a few, a few council meetings ago, they did put in some temporary asphalt. And if you go down there now, you can see where the contractor's coming with the drainage on Howard approaching Crawford. So they're going to be on that road pretty soon and, you know, taking it out and getting it, you know, new drainage, new water sewer, and then finalizing it.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all. Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
I just want to ask the chief about a couple items on here. One is SS.
Is it SS?
Yeah, about the FCIS software produced by IRAD Group. And I'm not under, I'm not understanding the full scale of what it does. I mean, seventy-five hundred dollars for the term, but for the year. What exactly is it for? Geolocations based off credit cards and prepaid access cards?
Which one are you talking about there?
SS Sam Sam?
There you go. Chief? Chief? Trying to recall.
That's okay.
So this is software that we would use during an investigation to determine if we've seized some property where it would be credit cards or bank cards or any of that, to give us the opportunity to determine what's actually on the device.
Well, what it says in there is, is to seize funds on prepaid access cards and debit cards for subsequent deposit into an authorized depository account and is necessary for the day-to-day business of police department. I mean, if it's, if it's an investigatory thing, totally support that. You know, the other one that's on here is, is Triple D, and that, that's the one about Celebrite, to breaking, to getting into cell phones. Now, this, the Celebrite, that software, I'm assuming is only used upon either probable cause or a warrant issued by a judicial body.
That's correct.
Okay.
Used by just about every law enforcement agency now, federal and state.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I don't have a problem with anything that helps you with the investigation.
Well, sorry for the slow return on that. I had to-
It's quite okay. The, the only concern I have with IRAD is, is the seizure of people's funds and the process by which you get it back, the standard of which we could argue all day. And so I wanted to know what the intent for the use of the FCIS software is with regard to the police department, and is it for investigatory purposes or seizure purposes?
Well, it would be for, for both, actually. First, we would investigate based on probable cause, and then if there was something there that was seizable, then it would be seized. Depending on if it's federal, you know, if the feds are going to seize it for us, or if it's a state, and if, you know, whether the district attorney would allow us to seize it.
Right. The, I didn't know if the term prepaid card is in here just to be inclusive, or if we've had a phenomenon of prepaid cards being used to commit crimes.
Yeah, so some of both. I mean, we don't want to cover all the bases, but yes, there's been prepaid, prepaid cards are used generally in a, in a lot of situations where someone wants to keep something secret, you know, which is their right unless they're committing a crime.
Okay. Thank you, chief. That's all I have for you.
Yep. Again, sorry for the delay.
It's quite all right. There's, this has got to be a record. We're up to III, I. There's no way you can keep everything straight. I appreciate it, chief.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item X, just, so I'll let the clerk know I'll be voting against item X. This is a five thousand dollar donation. I just wish this had come to us as a non-departmental expense. We're talking about the budget, is all, is my, is my reason. So I'll just note that I'll be voting against that. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Glavin?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything either. I'll ask for, call for the vote, and then I'll ask for any exceptions. All in favor of the consent agenda? Seven, zero. Mr. Lawrence, exceptions?
Triple B.
Triple B, is in boy?
Boy, bravo, bravo, bravo.
Okay. Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
The only thing I wish I could vote halfway on one, but I can't, so can I just abstain from SS Sam Sam? So can I just abstain from SS, Sam-Sam?
Mr. Tisdale?
No on Item X.
Mr. Glavin?
I have none.
And I have none. All right. We'll now move to the routine agenda. I'm sorry. We'll now move to code enforcement hearings.
The first item on the agenda today, Item A, Tyler G. and Taylor M. Bertrand, Zero Malvila Cove. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Tyler or Taylor Bertrand, Zero Malvila Cove? All right, if not, this case is closed.
Item B is actually the property next door, Tyler G. and Taylor M. Bertrand, Zero Malvila Cove. Still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Tyler or Taylor Bertrand, Zero Malvila Cove? If not, this case is closed.
Item C, Jesse Campbell, 212 Bowen Street. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Jesse Campbell, 212 Bowen Street? Anyone to speak against? If not, this ca.
Yes, sir.
I, I spoke to the owner a while back. They did send somebody, they didn't do a good job on it. I'mma, I'mma ask them one more time, and then I'll.
Or do a 30-day extension?
I'll give them 30 days one more time.
Have a, first by Mr. Lawrence, um, Guines. A motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? 7-0 for a 30-day extension. Item D?
Good. Item D, Dragon Sino, LPTDA, A Hong Kong Corporation, 286 Veterans Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item E, Joseph J. Matic and Harleen G. Beebe, 820 Bradford Street, that case has been resolved. Item F, Cynthia O'Neill, 190 Brady Drive, that case has been resolved. Item G, Karen G. and Lauren G. Sassadick, 133 Cedar Street. I'd like to ask for 30 days on that one, please.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor for 30 days? 7-0. Next item?
Item H, Albert David Conley, 335 Belvedere Drive. This property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition to Albert Conley, 335 Belvedere Drive? All right, if not, this case is closed. We'll now move to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
Walt, the latest update on money we received?
All right, after our previous council meeting the next day, we received 2.05 million from MAMM.